Guys, want to introduce yourselves? You want to come down? Introduce yourself to him.
Well, I've already introduced myself, Marcus. Again, it's good to meet you. Thank you for joining the team.
And I'm Trish Tierney, even though we already introduced ourselves.
I'm Annette Stewart.
I'm Kathleen Wilson. I'm the manager of the library and I moved here in 2002.
I'm Suzanne Martin Smith. This is the end of my first year and I own the Homemade Cafe across the street.
All right. Is this where you want me to do? You want to do the elections now?
Yeah, go ahead with the elections. I'm going to get the audio video working.
Okay. All right, so we need to nominate a chair and a vice chair for 2018.
I nominate Annette for chair and Stephanie for vice chair.
I second that nomination.
You think she's going to be okay? Probably. She's going to be all right.
I'm sure.
Yeah. All right. All right, yeah, thank you. So, we need to vote then. So, all in favor? All opposed? All right. So, are you ready now to move forward?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and move forward as much as we can. The projector gave us an error message that it was overheating and so I'm not quite sure what the issue is there. In any event, did we, have we done audience comments yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that recorder was working. So, are there any audience comments that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business items, the public hearing for draft design standards.
All right, so before you tonight, we have a public hearing and a discussion on the draft design standards. And if you remember, at our December meeting, Bob Binford from Makers was here and gave a presentation about the design standards. And we had a little bit of discussion then, but we wanted to give you some time to read and digest the contents of that document. And so, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to take public testimony on this current draft of the design guidelines. And then, we, ultimately, we had hoped to have a final draft to you tonight so that we could close the public hearing. But because there still may be some tweaks to the design guidelines based on the questions we hear from you tonight, we're suggesting that you continue the hearing to our February meeting. And that way, if somebody wants to testify on any remaining changes, they would be able to. But in any event, we can take any testimony that our one citizen tonight has and then we can discuss it with you. So, just a reminder, the city approved a contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design to prepare architectural and site design standards for the city that would apply to all multifamily, three-unit and higher development, as well as commercial or other non-residential types of development. And so, we've worked very hard. We had an advisory committee that had some technical experts, builders and architects, to help kind of shape the drafting of this document. And we also, of course, did the urban design tour that at least a few of the planning commissioners were able to attend. And actually, I think Mr. Bernstein, Steen or Stein?
Steen, Bernstein.
Steen. Mr. Bernstein, you were on that field trip, correct?
No, I did not go on the field trip.
Okay. So, I think two of you were on the field trip and then I know most of the city council was able to attend that as well. And that was kind of an introduction to some of the design elements that we're talking about and looking to build into our code to hopefully improve project outcomes as we see more development that is not of the single-family type. So, Carrie, I don't know if you want to check that now and see if our projector will click on?
If that doesn't work, I can wing it and go without slides.
Okay. I think rather than, if you remember the last meeting, yeah, the TV may, see if the TVs come on. I think they just take a minute to click on when she's selected.
Does that podium slide at all?
It does.
Can we move it? Because I'm just seeing her eyes. Thank you. Thank you.
But now, Marcus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, at the December meeting, we gave you a presentation. I think it was close to 100 slides. And so, we're not going to have a redo of that presentation. And hopefully, if you wanted to re-watch that, you were able to go online and watch the video of our last meeting. But we do want to touch on the differences or the revisions that have been made since our December meeting and which are reflected in the draft that came out in your current packet. And so, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Bob and he can kind of walk you through the big differences that you see in this draft versus the previous one. And then, we'll see if there's any public comments prior to discussing this.
Thanks, Nick. So, oh, looks like we do have some visuals here.
It's a miracle.
So, I just have about 10 slides here to go through some of the changes. And you should see in your version, in track changes from the last time that we met, we've, since that time, we-
We have a clean version.
Oh, it's a clean version?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll just point out some of the main areas. But we did go through, staff scrubbed it really good and we had a chance to go back over it and tune some things up a bit. But I'll go over some of the main things. And applicability was one of them. Just, we had to clean up where the applicability language was. And as Nick had mentioned, it applies to commercial and multifamily. So, single-family duplexes are exempt. And then, we also have a provision in there that says that the Old Clifton Industrial Park is exempt. But other industrial zoned, or is it, what's the district called? Business? Let's see, industrial, employment off, industrial slash office. So, those would apply, but there is a provision in here that says the review authority may waive or relax provisions in other employment-dash-industrial-office-zone properties depending on the type of use, number of anticipated employees and customers in the site's physical context. And I talked about that last time, so that provision's still there. We just wanted to clarify that that provision's there. And we added a map of the Old Clifton Industrial Park, just to clarify that. So, that's one, one of the components. The other part is updating the provisions related to the review process. And I don't expect you to read what's on the screen. It just kind of shows some of the sections in the introduction that talks about this. And so, under 2012820D, it talks about review for compliance. And that mostly just says with, when there's new development applications, even if it's like a binding site plan, that those things would be reviewed. Because there may be some conformance issues. We want to make sure that we're not creating something that sets up a future non-conformity or a problem with the design standards. So, there's that.
Do you have a copy of the current sign review of this report? Because I don't have one.
Did you, you didn't get the printed packet?
Don't see anything here.
I mailed the packet to the address that you gave me, your post office box.
Haven't seen it.
Okay, I'll use mine.
Geez, I think you're-
Oh, geez, it's hard to come by.
It's okay, we're ready.
There's another provision, just says that if applicants, there's an optional design review board, project recommendation, and that's something that applicants can opt for. We've also added submittal requirements and we dove into the details there to identify what types of materials are going to be needed for design review applications.
And if we can just stop and talk about the design review board for a moment. Currently, the city has a design review board that only reviews projects in our downtown. It's only been invoked twice in seven or eight years because we haven't had any projects occur downtown that triggered that review. I think four projects have come in that were possibly going to go through that process and two of them dropped out before they got there because it was too complicated and difficult to navigate. And so, the proposal here is that the design review board is an available path for review. And they have slightly more flexibility when it comes to reviewing the project or their recommendation, you give substantial weight to their recommendation if you choose to go through that process. It's an extra step because you have to go to a public meeting. The board is going to meet and discuss your project and potentially give you suggestions. But the idea is that they can, they're an extra set of eyes that can look at something and give a recommendation that will factor into the decision-making process. Whereas, the administrative review is going to be very black and white and very specific. So, it's just something that somebody can opt for, but they're not required to do in any area of the city under the proposal.
And that could be helpful if they, if they're proposing design departures, which there are opportunities for that in the draft code here. But it'd be another set of eyes to take a look at that and then they can try to demonstrate how their alternative design complies with that criteria. So, there's also, under 2012850, a pre-submittal design review. And as part of the issue, really, this gets to the point when developers are early in the stage of the process. You know, a lot of the times, the detailed application won't come in until the end. But times developers want to, it's usually good to come in early when they're, especially if they're thinking about departure opportunities. So, there's an option here that they can come in before, early in the stage. Maybe when they have a conceptual plan or idea. And so, they can opt to do that. And I think it's their benefit to make sure that they're not getting too far down the road financially on a project before they get their concept, at least conceptually, approved.
Yeah, and again, this was an optional process. And for most application types, we recommend a pre-application meeting where somebody comes in and they'll meet with the city to talk about sewer and water service, how access to the property is going to occur. And so, that's a, that is really a pre-design meeting. This is actually where you would have already had the pre-design meeting, but you've gotten to the point where you've created a concept, but you don't want to go through the cost of having an architect draw plans if those plans may not meet the standard. And so, it's kind of a, it's a way for you to test your idea before you spend the money to have somebody actually design the full building, including all of the details that go with creating construction plans.
And then, last on the, kind of the review process part, is our departures, which we've talked about. But we've added some language in here that explains and differentiates a departure from a variance. So, that is, that has been added, just to make it clear. The other thing we've done, we've made some tweaks to the maps and the designations in some places. And again, this is really hard to see, at least on the screen. But when you, when you look at the maps, you'll see some. So, like, off of Bethel, the backside of Mitchell Avenue, we changed from the other designation to mixed, for example. And Nick and I were just looking over some of the additional maps before the meeting and identifying some other possible edits that could be made to add flexibility where necessary.
Yeah, one of the changes you'll see between now and the February meeting where we're going to ask you to make a recommendation will be some map amendments. And I think what we've realized is that we may have designated more streets than we ought to in terms of applying the frontage standard. And so, we're looking at making sure that we've done the absolute minimum because there's some stretches of road where you have critical areas on both sides of the street and may not need to be designated, or you may have other reasons to not, you may want to allow, for instance, wider parking lots on certain lots. And so, we don't want to preclude that type of commercial development in all parts of the city, which is kind of how the maps are drawn right now. So, we're relaxing that standard a little bit in some areas.
Yeah, I think for the most part, some of the lines that were drawn, particularly on those edges of single-family districts or the back end of the commercial, were probably too restrictive or aggressive. And they probably will warrant flexibility. So, I think some of these changes that we'll be making will allow more flexibility in areas that we think realistically warranted, is what it comes down to. And, but the primary commercial fronting streets, for the most part, there are no changes to those. They're just these edge streets.
Nick?
Yes?
Was that last one, was that to compensate for those businesses that are in that area? The change in the, because it looks like it's open in that?
No, it actually, it actually has more to do with the planning that we're doing on the Bethel corridor and how traffic is going to be routed using Mitchell and new intersection improvements at Lundberg. And I forget the other street. Lundberg is offset from the street that goes back to the school administration building. I know Annette can tell me the name of the-
Hoover?
I think so, yeah. So, anyway, that, that whole area, we wanted to make sure that kind of lines up with what is being designed for Bethel.
In the future, okay.
Yeah.
Also, in some cases, we've made some updates to some of the graphics for clarification. So, some of you may remember the graphic to the left when we talk about situations where you might increase the minimum setbacks adjacent to the side yard, where you have a big, long, multifamily building and where the units, for instance, have their only set of windows facing that narrow side yard. So, we've, the images on the right are some of the updated graphics that go with it that kind of explain, well, here's when a five-foot setback applies versus here's when a 15-foot setback applies to this type of development. So, I think that that should make it very clear what the minimum standards are.
And that's on page 65 and 66 of the standards, those two images.
The other thing that we did was, there's some standards in there for parking and access and internal circulation. The one thing that we, I felt we needed to add was clarification on driveways. And so, what we've done is we've added cross-references to the existing, like, public works-type development standards and guidelines. But also, we wanted to look at things like townhouses and where, you know, if and when you have front-loaded townhomes, where you have new garages and driveways fronting on the street, that you kind of want to avoid the situation on the right in the photo on the screen there, where you have one driveway after another. And this image is actually an example in Tacoma where they were allowed to do all this. And as a result, it, it doesn't look good. It creates conflicts with the drive, with the street and with the sidewalk. So, what we've done in that case is we've said, okay, only when you have townhouses that are, say, 30 feet wide, can you have a, have a front-loaded driveway on a public street. And when you do, it has to be no more than 12 feet wide. Otherwise, your driveways and access should be off an alley or off a separate private drive that goes around the back. So, you don't end up with a situation on the far right there.
And that was on page 74, if you hadn't found it.
We also talked last time about usable open space for residential. And we had mentioned stormwater ponds could be used in some cases there. I think we had a good discussion on that. But staff added some images that show a good example of where ponds provide usable open space and have a trail around it. And then, we show a bad example, which is more of a utilitarian type of pond that wouldn't qualify as that usable residential open space. So, we thought that's, that was a good clarification. Also, corporate architecture, there's a provision that prohibits corporate architecture. But, but we wanted to provide one area that was exempt from that. And that was the interchange and I don't have the page number.
Bedrick in 16.
So, the graph-
Page 90.
So, the graphic just clearly identifies that area that is exempt from that standard.
Can you, will you explain that to me? What does that mean? What does it mean that you're going to prohibit?
So, corporate architecture- So, the concept was, or is, corporate architecture is identified as, "architecture that is defined predominantly by corporate identity features and is difficult to adopt to other uses."
I know what you're talking about.
So, it's like the IHOP or the McDonald's with the mansard roof.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Okay.
Thanks. I thought you were talking about signs for some reason.
And I think I got one or two more slides here. Another one was, we talked about standards for, when you have a flat roof and there's, so, standards for cornice, roofline design for flat roofs. And we had, kind of had a debate of whether or not we wanted to have some defined standards for this. And in the older draft, it had been mentioned that maybe we need this for just multifamily, not commercial. But after thinking about this some more, we thought it's more the opposite. And really, these cornice-type of standards really should apply more to commercial uses in buildings, in mixed-use buildings. So, we flipped that and said that, that these standards apply to non-residential and mixed use. And we think that's more appropriate really here. Because multifamily buildings largely are going to have more pitched roofs. And they're going to be subject to other articulation standards anyway. So, that was a change. And then, lastly, I think there's the last one. We have special standards for the use of concrete block, metal siding. And, and we call here cement, cementous wallboard examples. So, that's like you've heard of the term hardy board or hardy panel. And that's probably the most common type of exterior material that you'll see on new multifamily buildings and kind of condos. So, what we did here is we added some graphics there that really paint a picture of what the words say in the standards. To really try to mix it up. You're trying to avoid that example where you just have the same color and material on this big, huge wall. And so, the other examples show good examples of how you can articulate the buildings and work in that hardy panel and hardy board. So, we thought that that would be a little more helpful. So, those are, those are some of the main types of changes that we've done to try to improve the document, make it easier to read and understand for you, for staff, for developers. And we still have, I'll acknowledge on the, on the boat trip over here, I've been reviewing back and I've gotten at least some, you know, capitalization edits and things like that to button it up a little bit more. So, but the, the main content things are what we presented, the main changes.
So, I think the next step would be to open the public hearing and see if we have any testimony. And then, my recommendation would be to continue that hearing until, is our next meeting the fifth? The sixth? Okay, so we'll be continuing it to our February meeting. So, I'll let the chair open the hearing.
So, at this time, I opened the public hearing for the draft design standards. Yeah, you want to come up and talk?
Hello, I'm Jerry Harmon. And I really didn't come to speak, but the thought that's gone through my mind ever since I went to the presentation that was made here, probably a month and a half ago, I believe. And when I walked away, I thought, there's no individuality if you go to Issaquah, if you go to Gig Harbor, if you go to almost any place this building. I was thinking when we drive through West Seattle, everything looks the same with this new 40 indent, 40 indent. I don't care if they change what's on the front. You still, we're losing the ability in my mind to be creative because every place looks the same, is my only thought. That when I walked away and left, and then, I liked the idea of not using, maybe it was the hardy board or the stucco that crumbles at the bottom. And I know we have to have rules and regulations. But somehow, I think we're getting away from creativity and making your community look unique. Because on some of those pictures, you drive through any community now and people that have a head start on us, they look just like what we're planning for us to look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you want to continue the hearing, we can move into discussion.
And you said it was February 6th?
Yes.
So, we will continue the hearing on the draft design standards until February 6th. So, do you guys have any comments?
I have one question. When we, when we met before, we talked about the fencing around the retention ponds, which are often on the front-facing side of commercial buildings. Was that addressed at all, revisions?
So, on page 79, I think is really the only place that we dealt with it. And we're simply saying that your required open space can only be met with a pond if it is not the fence-type of pond. It doesn't tell you where you can put it on the site. And I think part of the reason for that is that your soils analysis and a lot of the stormwater technical and environmental requirements dictate where water is going to infiltrate the best on your site. And so, we may not be able to, to make that determination from purely an aesthetic standpoint. It may have to be in a certain area for another reason.
Right. It's more the fencing on the outs around them. And not so much as with the open space, it's when the retention ponds are required as far as the building codes.
But if we, if the retention pond is designed to be used like it, like they demonstrate in the picture, as if it's a community attraction?
Right.
Do we still, we don't necessarily need a, any kind of fencing if we turn it into a park-style pond?
Exactly, yeah. But, but-
When there, when there is a fence, are you saying you want it to be a nicer material fence?
Yes, and not chain-link fences.
Yeah, I agree.
So, we can, we can add, yeah, we're, we're working on the landscape code and that's probably the place where that should go. But we could specify that it be like, you know, the vinyl-coated chain-link versus the, the standard anodized or-
Yes.
Or wooden or some other material.
Is there any way to get away from having a retaining pond like that that has to have a fence? I mean, could you require them to put it underground or so you wouldn't see it?
The new Stormwater Manual actually requires the use of low-impact development, which is rain gardens and infiltration swales. And it's only when the soils report determines that that is not feasible that you can even build a pond anymore. There, there still are some projects that are vested to the old stormwater codes that, you know, because they have already started, are still designing to those, you know, a pond. But what we're finding is that the soils in Port Orchard are so poor because of, you know, the glaciation that occurred here. And you have glacial till everywhere where nothing infiltrates. Most places are still going with the traditional ponds because LID just doesn't work, given our soil type. But some engineers are, are more willing to take risks with LID, more so than others. And it kind of depends on which engineer gets hired and what their analysis tells them.
I'm glad you added the open area pond. That's nice.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue to look at the fence-type issue. And really, just in terms of the discussion here, I think this is, this is really the time. Anything that is bothering you or that you have a question about, we'd like to try to get that addressed here tonight because at the next meeting, it is our hope that we will present you something that is, is totally ready to go and we don't have to make any further revisions to. So, anything at all is on your mind, please ask.
I was just wondering, I saw the picture where you were going to have the walkway around the pond. Why does one pond have to have a fence and another didn't have a walkway and no fence? Just wondering, what's the, why does one person get the ability to do that and another one has to have a fence? I'm just-
It, it usually has to do with the grade surrounding the pond. And I think if it's over a two or a three-to-one slope, most people are not going to get insurance without fencing it. And so, you have to have a much gentler grade to the pond. And I think the pond has to be excavated in a way that it's not going to be something that's impossible to climb out of if you were to go into it. So, it's really a safety concern.
So, then the fence could still be applicable if they can't design it otherwise?
Couldn't.
Okay.
But, but if you can't design it otherwise, then you're providing some other form of open space in a different location.
Preferably. We talked at one point last time about a different, was it in this, the last meeting, different sections, you know, where we could like dictate or have a certain like- like color palette or something like that? Was that part of this one?
That was the Tremont overlay, something, wasn't that when we were talking about the Tremont Design Standards a while, a while back?
I think at the last meeting, we talked about breaking up the massing of a building and that color was not enough to differentiate segments of the building. You actually have to make a physical modulation or change from horizontal to vertical or some kind of thing.
Okay.
I think it's more about how you, how you break up the massing of a building.
I'm just remembering something else, I'm sorry. I guess that wasn't it.
Well, my question is, is with the consideration of Jerry's comments, do you feel like these design standards still allow for enough creativity so that we don't look cookie cutter in comparison to other communities?
Yes. I think if you look for those articulation standards that she might have been referring to, it allows a lot of flexibility for how you can do that. Because we allow choices for how it can be done. Also, there's the departure process where you can go potentially longer if you meet the intent another way. I mean, I think you need to have at least some articulation standards there. But the way we've set it up allows for a lot of creativity and variety. I think the main reason why you see the same architecture there is because that, that's how the developers tend to be. They're using the similar materials and they're kind of using their similar concepts. It's probably more coming out of what they're doing rather than, than the standards. That's my thought in seeing what, what comes out of the community. But in terms of what we're doing, I think it allows a lot of flexibility and variety. We're not forcing any one design down, down on the developers. And if you look at that, you'll, you'll see that.
Encourage variety?
Encourage variety? I think it does just by the way it's built in. I mean, if you feel like you need to add that in there, you can. But I don't know what that, that'll get you. But by its nature, by its toolbox nature, I think it allows for those, those options and designs. And the other thing is, notice that we try to use a variety of photos in here. And I, more and more, I've been trying to do that. And I also try to, we also try to provide a variety of architectural styles and materials to show that there's more than one way of doing this. So I often try to indicate that, well, you can do a more traditional-looking building or you can do a modern-looking building. So it's important too, if you think, you know, if some of the photo examples could be improved or we need more examples, that's something that we can do. But generally, because I don't like communities that look the same and are cookie cutter, I'd like to show a variety of, of good examples. So you don't end up that way. And in the end, a lot of this comes down to the developer. You know, there's lots of choices that they could do here. And as I've mentioned before, a lot of this unfortunately is coming down to, you know, we try to encourage the good. We're trying to prohibit the bad and figure out, and try to prevent the really bad stuff. But in the end, we allow a lot of flexibility here. You know, someone can still probably design a, not a great building, but at least we can prevent the worst stuff. So we're, we're making sure that they do a certain number of minimum things that'll at least meet the standards. They could still probably design some weird stuff that, that meets it. But at least we'll, you're insured some minimum things here.
Yeah, I would add to that, that, and I'm going to speculate that, like myself, Ms. Harmon probably has a preference for a lot of things that were built 70 and 80 years ago. And a lot of what this is addressing is things that were done 30 and 40 years ago. When you, you know, if you go look at a building that was built in the 50s or 60s downtown, in downtown Bremerton, I don't think there's a lot of creativity there either. And so we're really, you know, considering modern building codes and modern building materials, I think this improves over kind of the minimum, which, you know, you might see if somebody just built a cube-type building. I mean, it's.
Yeah. And again, the, the departure process. So I think I've explained that before. What we've found to be successful is when you provide some clear minimum standards, but then offer the things like the toolbox to allow choices to the developers and then allow that departure opportunity. So it's very important in those articulation and the massing standards. Because and sometimes, you know, they may want to propose something that, you know, if the standard is articulation every 40 feet, maybe they have a good concept that's 45 feet, but they've done it in a certain way that, that meets the intent by a mixture of materials, cover, colors, by the way they've done the windows and balconies. So this allows for some of that flexibility to occur. And I think you heard, when you heard, we're lucky to have some architects on, on the committee in a couple of our meetings there. And I think we've heard, we heard some good concepts and a lot of support from them, that this allows them that flexibility to do that.
And as for clarification, this is also for new construction and remodels only. So it doesn't undo or do anything retroactive
Correct.
from that committee. I don't know whether that was clarified here.
Yeah, and a lot of this is built.
Not going to change what we already have unless there's remodeling going on.
Correct, correct.
I just hope that it doesn't, it's not dated. You know, 25, 30 years from now, it doesn't look like that green carpet that it used to be. And, you know, I just hope it, I hope it, I hope it doesn't date us. Yeah.
Well, I think we've, that's why we've stayed away from being super strict in some of the material standards. And again, because you have the, so many choices in the articulation and the massing, I think there are some timeless concepts that we have in there. I mean, generally, you want to articulate buildings anyways. This allows a great variety of ways that you can do that. So because of that, I think there's, it's going to allow, it allows a lot of diversity in the way it's going to look. So I think by dated, an individual architect's design might look dated, but it's not the fault of the standards. It might just be their design. And that's just the risk you have to take, you know?
Yeah. And one of the, one of the discussions that we had in committees, and I think at least one or two people said, well, why, shouldn't we have a theme for Port Orchard or an architectural style or build things to look like a certain era? And at least my personal opinion is I would rather have the best of, the best examples of architecture in a given era as opposed to a faux, a modern building that has a faux facade to look like something that's old, but it's actually not. And it's built with, you know, cheap cement board siding or something to look like something that's old-timey. I, you
Yeah.
I think it's, it's good to have a diversity of architectural types that are really good examples as opposed to forcing one
Yeah.
on the community.
Unless you have a really, really, really strong reason to focus on a certain theme and certain history, it's usually a bad idea to go there. I've seen a bunch of communities that kind of tried half-heartedly to create a theme and it went horribly wrong. And it shows today in some of these places.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't.
Some communities thrive on it. Not that I want to do that here, but, you know, if you look at Leavenworth and Wentworth and, yeah, they thrive on.
You have to come up with your, your own individual thing. And given that we don't have any one architectural style that's, that is something to build on, it would be hard to do. But
Yeah.
we floated the Puerto or Certo idea.
We have another comment and question. And this maybe have been covered already. I don't remember specifically discussing it in the committee. But it's particularly about the block frontage for downtown west and the downtown east. Where by, and this kind of talks a little bit about our heritage as being a port town and we are a marine city. It's in our name. The differences between the marine and the storefront and will the, kind of the storefront red sections take away from the marine feel of the city? Or how does that, how do you mesh that part?
Well, the storefront.
Storefront in downtown on the waterfront is going to be different than storefront at Cedric and, and three.
Well, the storefront designation here pretty much reinforces what's there and kind of builds on it strategically. The marine are those areas that are more of away from the core that are, have been, the context is different. They've been developed a little bit more differently. This marine designation is trying to make them more pedestrian-friendly as they, those properties redevelop. But it allows more flexibility than the storefront designation. So in that, in that marine designation, you could do a storefront on, on bay if you wanted to, or you could have it set back a little bit. But it also allows flexibility, a little more flexibility in where the parking can go. And I think, just by looking at the aerial and the, and the properties and the challenges there, I think they need that. So.
And I think the other thing, you see the dashed line on the back of the, kind of the core of downtown. And the idea is that as the pedestrian path is, is developed and improved through that area, we want to have those buildings both front the water and Bay Street so that you can come in from either side and there's storefronts on both sides. And so the dashed line indicates kind of a future or possible storefront designation should redevelopment occur. But it, you know, currently, there isn't actually a road there on which that building would front.
The other part about this is, you know, if a few years go by and things change or evolve one way or another, is you could change these designations. You know, if we think that, you know, a couple of people might be trying to develop a property and they have different ideas and maybe it doesn't jibe with the things here. And maybe it'd be okay to change a marine designation to other or maybe vice versa to storefront. So those are, that's one of the beauties of this is it makes it, because we think things do change over time, contexts and conditions. One example too, as we looked at some of the map changes here, two suggestions that we're looking at are changing Frederick, the side street, at least between Bay and Prospect, and Sydney between Bay and Prospect. Changing those from storefront to, to mixed is going to be our, our suggestion to change the maps, to make those purple rather than red there. Mostly because there's an 18-foot difference between Bay and Prospect and it's going to be tough to create a storefront on that slope there. So the mix just provides more flexibility in the design there. So I think that'll work better. So we're going to, we agreed that that would probably be a good idea to make that change.
So everybody feels pretty comfortable then? Any, any further questions? Okay. So at the next meeting, the plan I think is that I will be bringing the final draft forward and Bob is going to sit that one out just because we have limitations in our budget. So if you have, if you receive the next draft and you have any really technical questions that we need Bob to weigh in on, please send them in advance of the meeting so I can get his feedback. But I, I think the next meeting should go pretty smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, thanks for all your help.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Okay, so. So we have that accessory dwelling, is that where we are?
Yeah. And real quick, we wanted to, we were going to put this in your packet, but we figured you had enough to read. And so we just handed out a draft of this tonight so that we can take this up next meeting. The accessory dwelling unit chapter, it's a pretty short draft ordinance. The, our code currently allows ADUs, but the regulations are not very clear. They're listed in a couple of footnotes. And we thought that we could do a better job, both ensuring that ADUs work well and make it actually easier for them to be created. And as we all know, housing affordability is a major issue in our area. The idea here is both that we can make it easier to provide a, a supply of affordable housing and also help existing residents supplement their income if they wanted to build a small backyard cottage or an attached dwelling to their existing house. And so these standards, we are scheduling a public hearing on them for our February meeting. And I, I don't want to get too much into the detail right now. I think the main provision is that when you have an ADU approved, there's going to be a deed restriction, that, a document that you record on your property that verifies that this is an accessory dwelling unit and that only one of the two units will be rented out. You can't, you can't turn this into a duplex that's a rental. And part of making ADUs successful is making sure that there is a, a good property manager available to take care of things and keep an eye on things so that it doesn't become run down. So we've, we've set out some very basic standards. And I think if this is successful, one of the things that I'd actually like to do is there are, and I, I don't want to scare you with the word prefab because I'm not thinking mobile home or manufactured home, but they actually now build these modular ADU, ADU units that are, you can find them in modern architecture, craftsman architecture. And they will actually bring them on a truck and you have somebody do the site work for you, put in a foundation. And in three days, you can have an ADU up in your backyard at a reasonable cost. And they can be quite attractive and fit into the neighborhood. So one of our thoughts is to actually get pre-approved ADU plans that somebody would be able to come in and get a permit without having to have plans drawn up. And they could purchase an ADU from one of a handful of companies in the area that provide these structures. And we, and we would pick the ones that are compatible with Port Orchard's architecture. And see if we can't make it easy for somebody to build one of these and then, and therefore provide additional housing options in the city. And so this code just sets out kind of minimum standards for those, for the, the accessory dwelling units. And I think there's two documents attached. One of them is the draft code 20.134. And then there's another document that shows the existing zoning table. And then the footnotes that are, are going to be deleted and are essentially replaced with the new 20.134 section. Any questions on that one?
That's exciting. Okay. Dee, introduction to the housekeeping revisions.
So the other item that we're going to be bringing forward at the, at the February meeting is a, just a housekeeping ordinance. And as you know, we totally rewrote the code in June. And now we've been working with it for seven months. And we've noticed a handful of really minor corrections. They're not intended to be substantial changes to, you know, qualitative standards or what's allowed where. It's really just cleanup items. And so Carrie put together a really handy matrix explaining what each of the revisions are and why they are needed. And so hopefully that should help you cut through what is proposed. And so we're going to, we're proposing a hearing and seeking a recommendation on that at our February meeting as well. And I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. But if you have questions between now and the meeting, please let us know. And we'll, we'll give a more thorough presentation on the, the 6th of February.
Any questions? Okay. So we're to the approval of the minutes from the December 5th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes as written. Two seconds. Is there a second? Here. One second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
So one quick thing before we adjourn. And I realize that you were gone and it was Christmas break and stuff. But if we could get our packets sooner than last time, at least a week, that would be, because I'm sure we're all really busy, like you guys are busy. And we don't understand this stuff as much as you do. So it takes us a little bit longer. So I would like to propose that we get it at least a week.
That, that is definitely what we aim for. And part of the, the hang-up on this was we were trying to get some attorney review as well as consultant review. And getting schedules aligned with Christmas was difficult. But we definitely are aiming for a week at all times and we will, we'll do our best.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, we're done.
Oh, can I just mention one more thing that I forgot in our presentation on the design guidelines? I mentioned that some of the, some of the revisions to the designer review board chapter were included. But we also passed out the other sections of our existing code that are being repealed because they contradict the new design standards. And so there was a, a red line packet that was handed out that tweaked some of the things with the DOD and the Tremont overlay district. And because these are citywide standards now, they kind of overlap with what we already had in those areas. So just make sure you're familiar with those changes and. with those changes. And we'll talk about that more next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.